Seven oh five at this time I'll call the meeting's order and if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all. Very special happy new year to everybody here. I'm going to ask the board's indulgence unless I hear other that at this time I would like to open the agenda because we have with us Shepherd Livingston to talk about his Eagle Scout project. And that would be under ongoing business update because we also have Alex Miller Davies presentation as well as well if she calls in. Or Jim will give us the update. So that that will be great. I would also ask the board's indulgence and I'm going to move the agenda around a little bit. We're going to postpone number three, the approval of news and number four, the appointment and resignations. To move down because we have visitors here and that will be after we have public comment. We have people from the commission. And anyone else that needs to speak. Under one of Gwen, are you here for an agenda item?
I have a church meeting that I have to go to so come back for the last the trail rant parking lot.
Very good. What time is your meeting? Let's go. Let's go. We'll move on then from the call the order to the public comment. At this time I would call in Gwen Marion. Would you like to come close to microphone? I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
The person I want to talk about or I would like to request an amendment to the minutes of the December sixth meeting that you all had. And it would be seven item 7D, which was the report and update on the trails committee. The minutes state Rupert, we did look at the parking area nearest Bolton collision with Gwen Marion. And she recommends we do not follow through with that location because it would have a negative impact on the business. I did not make a recommendation. That's an inaccurate statement in the minutes. So I would ask that a change to that language be made. And I have two suggested ways that that could be changed to make it more accurate. One, it could read. We looked at the parking area with Gwen Marion and Joe Dillon and Jim Rupert recommend we do not follow through dot, dot, dot. Or we looked at the parking area with Gwen Marion and it appears that that location will have a negative impact on the business. So those are two suggested changes. And I would ask that you that you make either one of those or come up with your own. Please remove the fact that I the statement that I made a recommendation because I did not. I had stated in an email to Jim and Pam that I was withdrawing my participation in that discussion because I didn't want to jeopardize my friendship with David Wilson. He's been a longtime friend. Or and I didn't want to do anything that would jeopardize his business because it's a great business in Bolton. And I just didn't want to continue that conversation about that parking area.
What was the last one you gave your second? That's the one I was trying to write down.
Option two was we met with Gwen Marion and it appears that that location will have a negative impact.
I couldn't write that down.
I was speaking kind of fast too. Thank you. My second comment has to do with and I'll be back for the discussion about the about the grant. But I don't know if I'm allowed to speak during that during that period. And this is the grant that has to do with creating a parking area for the Nathan Hill corridor. And I just wanted to reiterate that I have offered my services to write the grant for that application. It's a $9 million grant program and I think that it would be an excellent opportunity for Bolton to get some money to create a parking area. There is a there is a three and a half acre piece of property that's just north of Munson's Munson's.
Chocolate parking lot.
Chocolate parking lot, right. And I think that that would be a good place to put the parking. The deadline for the grant submission is March 1. So if you do want me to help you with that, I would have to have the timeline, the budget. And the the construction estimates and a design by probably February 1st so that Jim and I could work on that. And we'd have to go. I'm sure we'd have to go back and forth a few times about the language. So I just I just wanted to get put that in your head that if the deadline is it's coming up pretty fast and I hope you do take.
That's why that's why it's on the agenda.
Hearing no objections from the board, hearing no objections, then I will add Mrs. Marion to be a participant for the trail grant for the parking lot near Munson's.
Thank you. And there is a webinar about this $9 million grant and it's on January 11th at 1 o'clock. If anybody would like information about that, I'd be glad to send it to you. And then my third comment is on a different topic and I would like to press my opinion that I believe that the board of selectmen should put a plan together for a new town hall. We've met. We've needed a town hall for 35 years and it's really time and I hate to see other projects keep getting put above the need for a town hall. I don't think that the firehouse expansion should be above the town, a new town hall expansion. It's that was just because that project might be ready and have a design for it doesn't to me doesn't mean that it's more important to the town than a new town hall. So that's all I have to say. And so I'm going to I'm going to go back to my other meeting, but I'll be.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The last time I was here and that's about the intersection of natural and protection 44. And really what we're starting to push to shape what were planned to solve the problems. But there I was coming through there. Talking to people who were named the left wing. Not by that much, not in the American department. I was here last time Dr. Lyle was kind of run over by somebody coming through the notch of 167. There's a lot of money out there now that are my.
We'll hear from you later. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. Morse. Would you like to sit, sir?
No, I understand all that. Jim Morse, for your road continuation of my comments last month. I'm very much in favor of a new town hall. Like I said last month. This place is used up, worn out and I want to save it for historical reasons, but we need a new town hall very badly. And the opportunity to do you get a new town hall set up at the old elementary school is a perfect opportunity, I think. To build. You got room to expand, as I said last month, expand and construct what you want and to put your alignments here, your more room, more levels, whatever. Parking area, all your features are there. And I just think we ought to move on that. And I don't mean to be repetitive, but I'm trying to sink a point home. Thank you. Let me speak.
Thank you, Jim. Dorothy, would you like to speak also this evening? Mrs. Livingston, would you like to speak this evening? If we'll hear from you later. Is there anything else you'd like to add on any other issue? Very good. Thank you for coming and for our comments. We're going to drop down because it is a school night. Number six with the board's indulgence. A is the update Alexandra Miller Davies' presentation for the Bolton High School Trail Project. The question was insurance information.
So the board had asked some questions about insurance and we have indeed reached out to insurance carrier. And they are trying to get us a little bit more information with the holidays. There were a lot of vacations. They did say in fact that they have other insurers that have raised the same questions. And there are some unique liabilities with regard to mountain biking in particular. And they are trying to connect me with the appropriate individual. So we will have more information on that hopefully within the next week or so. As people know, complete their vacations and come back to come back to work.
There's another question. Mr. Teller had asked the question, will a bicycle trail be a portion of the cross country trail? According to this what the minister, the question about maintenance of the trail.
Was it issue of the way you get to the proposed trail would be to take your bike down. Whether that would create ruts if it was wet weather that would then have to be repaired.
I did not discuss that once staff yet.
What would the protocol be? Flow would be repaired.
Yes.
We've just heard, excuse me, we've just heard from Mr. DePietro and he will be joining us shortly. Very good. Is there any other further questions about Ms. Miller Davies' presentation? So we did vote on it last according to our minutes and so it should be good to go forward unless there's any reason for the proponents to bring the issue back for a second vote. Hearing none, we'll move on. Shepherd Livingston is an Eagle Scout candidate and he has an Eagle Scout project that he has talked to us before some some of it. And we would like to ask him come up to the table and join us. We don't wait. It's the owl too. We need you to be with us. So it can be recorded and heard by those that have joined us virtually.
So if you want to sit just a couple of chairs down and look in that general direction, it will see your face rather because because the camera is in the top of the hour. And that way you can be comfortable and see your presentation and also we can the folks at home can see your face.
Thank you very much for bringing a presentation forward. And if you'd like to give us just a little background, if there's anything you want to add before you start your your PowerPoint.
All right, you can move the first slide. All right. So the background in this is I'm sorry, a life scout in BSA 225 out of Manchester. So this Eagle project is the Eagle project is to benefit the community. So I've I've I run and bike or I'm Bolton. I run for the Bolton High School cross country and track teams. So the trails and outdoors are one of my favorite things. I walked the property with Gwen Marion, who we just spoke and worked with the trail committee. So she helped me understand where the boundaries are and what certain features of the property that I should look out for and make sure I'm not going the wrong area. You can move it in next. So the history of this property is that it was acquired in 2017 by the town. It's about 53 acres. In the 1980s, there was a plan for a housing project on this property, but it fell through and it never completed. But as a consequence, there's many of the soil testing pipes littered on the property. So these white pipes are buried deep in the ground. There's also a lot of logging debris as the there was it was logged extensively and a lot of it's rotting towards the ground. So it may be difficult to see from here, but this is a map of the property in the lower left corner is the is the high school. It's from an aerial view. If it's possible, you might be able to. In the there's the zoom button on the left. All right. All right. So that's the Bolton High School and Brandy Street is right on the lower. And then there are the Old Bailey Road passes all the way along. And that goes down to the current rail trail and all the left when you're walking down that trail on the left is the same with property up there. And that is like I said, 53 acres. So it's quite a large property. And it extends along the northern side of the Old Bailey Road, the majority for there. You can move to the next slide now. So the proposed trail would start on the from Old Bailey Road, which has a trail on it now that the cross country team uses to get the rail trail and some other people. And it would be about between quarter, three quarters of an hour to a mile. It would go over the a few overlooks that you get a good view and through this pine forest in the upper right corner. The there's a lot more land to the west, but a lot of it is full of bramble and quite swampy. So it would be very difficult to use to the trail. But up there you it's hard to see, but there's a pond, a small pond. And that I visited yesterday and it's quite foreign now, but I imagine it's small in the summer, but it's kind of a cool landmark. So my plan for the trail to go through that.
Through it or next?
This what eastern side of the property is much more open. It's still quite a lot of young trees because it was logged. I do not know how long ago, but my guess is. And I I would prefer it. I would love if the trail could start from the high school, either from the fields or from the back portion where the cross country trail runs through. But the the road the road has sunken by like 10 feet from when it was, you know, from the last 300 years. So it's it'd be very difficult to pass. But if I could find a spot, that would be preferred because it's a little bit harder to access if it was built like this.
Do you want to describe Old Bailey Road?
Yes, Old Bailey Road was used by most groups, I think about. Yeah. And it it's a it's a quite a historical road. It's kind of part of Bolton and it it's a quite steep rocky road. And there's what it's it's kind of more into a trail now at this point. I don't know if it goes wherever on it, but and it it travels all the way. It basically comes out almost on the Brandy Street and goes all the way down to the rail trail. And I don't know where it went before, but I imagine town. And yeah, that's just about that.
You want the next slide?
Yeah, next slide. All right. So I have a few photos here that I took. You can see some of the views from the overlooks like on the left right there. There's it goes even there's some even better ones up top. So it's kind of a cool spot. Then there's a few stone walls which are within the property as far as I can tell from the maps I've studied. So I but they're kind of cool.
Would you be? You wouldn't be moving any of those stone walls?
No, I would not.
You'd be going near them?
Yeah, that'd be cool. A buddy. Yeah. So there are a few marquee sections and a few spots, but nothing crazy. I want that was just from yesterday. So recent rains. And there can be a few ways you could do that preferably with rock because bridges require upkeep. And then but you can see there's you can see there's some some other forest shots. Um, there's another stone wall on the left. On the right is some of the old decaying wood. You can see a lot of a lot of old stumps and law and the scrap from logging that's on the ground and it's just starting to rot away now. So the trail will be built with the help of volunteers from with scouts and the community. The BSA insurance covers the volunteers while they're working. Their two scout leaders will be on site if it had to assist and I made assistance from the town when it comes to clearing larger trees that may be on the ground where I want the trail to go. But most of it would be it would be done. All right. And steps forward. So if this gets approved, the next plan would be to make a more comprehensive plan, which would go to the council scouts and they would decide whether they think it's feasible. And my tentative timeline for this, which I hope would be able to be done is in March because at that point the foliage is not growing in yet. So it's a little bit easier to clear. And I would be following the in the trail building guidelines, which basically outline that the trail should not be steeper than like 15 degrees in order to prevent erosion. So let me provide size questions.
Hi, questions from the board?
Yes. Is this going to be part of the cross country? The schools cross country trail system? Is that one of the goals you have?
Most likely will not be used in a race or really for use on a daily basis because it's going to be it's going to be a bit more rugged than what we usually want to run on. But my hope is that we could it could be used for the cross country runners, the runners, and it could also be used by all members of the town. I see many dog walkers are in the school and I think having another trail could be very nice. And this property has a lot of nice features on them. It normally aren't able to be accessed by residents.
A trail blaze tree marked.
Yes, it would be blazed.
And you would talk with Mrs. Marion about how to blaze it?
Yes.
A question from our virtual friends. Can we find Mr. Aramita?
Well, excuse me.
Question, Mr. Aramita?
No, my hand was up because I would like to comment somewhere during the meeting on what was said about notch road during open comment. If you could find me a place to make a comment on that during the meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Mr. Petro, good evening. Would you would you like to speak on the issue?
I don't know. Thank you. No.
Very good. Adam?
Go back to the. Yeah. How far is that pond year round?
I guess it probably dries up in the summer. I don't know. I did not know could not tell how deep it is. And there's a small stream that's running from it. But that was yesterday. So right after the rains and it's been wet for a while.
So how separated from the pond is the trail going to be? How far and how how far up?
It could be. It could be as closer as far as I want. I thought it was a cool feature, but I could see if there's concern about water contamination if that's what is your is there do you have a concern about the trail being close to the pond?
Couple of concerns, not huge ones, but if it's too close, people are going to have dogs on that. Which dogs means waste into the pond, which is not good.
Yeah.
Depending on the topography, if you're if you're eroding on the on the edge of that, again, you're going to put stuff into the pond. And I just saw when you go back to the math, it really looks like there's a intermittent stream.
It may be a vertical.
Through that.
Maybe a vertical pool.
Yeah.
Which would be really.
But it almost looks like there's some kind of low spot that that might carry water. And that's always. I assume. Person is probably.
I really zoomed in. Let me let me try and zoom out a little.
Almost like it's an interview.
It's small. It looks like.
It is. Yeah, that can't be more. That little pond can't be more.
Down to the right a little bit. That you're falling.
Might be weird. So wherever you try. That it's impossible. It's just that it's.
So the question would be, I believe, Adam, the question would be, does this go to the our wetlands agent to look at this proposal?
I don't know that it's necessary to do it formally, but I wouldn't mind having to walk that site when you go out.
Him? With him now?
To when you place the trail so that everybody knows that it's reasonable choice.
Yeah, there's a lot of area to play with if that area should be.
Yeah, he could he could provide you.
So I'm not concerned about a lot of us too if you need to have a fight off.
Jim, would you please ask Mr. Cobble? We'll talk to Jim Cameron Cobble, the wetlands agent. We'll put you guys together and so there's no question.
I have one question if I might. Is this a multi-use path or mostly for foot traffic?
So mostly for foot traffic. I know there was a talk of the insurance for the mountain bike trails, the Alice's plan to put in. And I don't know exactly what the rules are about like I've never seen like or bikes prohibited at, you know, the high school. I'm not sure if that's I know my plan is not to it's not going to advertise that's not much trouble, but I don't know what the rules are if it has to be prohibited. Or if my bikes can be allowed, but it's not going to be it's not it's main usage is not for that. It's.
Why are we talking about?
Usually the single trailer about two feet. But yeah, I would say yeah, about two feet.
Want something about motorized.
Yeah, I think we'd want to sign at least. And you know, maybe, you know, some sort of, you know, poster rocks to prohibit easy access with quads and.
Yeah, I I've noticed on the Old Bailey Road. So I know that people do. But very it's it was almost in that.
And would you be looking for your surf, your your trail surface? Would you be keeping native material or would you be looking at bringing in stone dust or that sort of thing for the pathway?
So generally when following the guidelines to you the is kept the natural surface, but usually the top or so layer of topsoil in most spots is removed to for this because the mineral soil is quite a bit more durable. And
It's mushy too.
Yeah, yeah. And then in certain certain spots, if the grade is too steep and it has to cross the hill, there can be bench cuts where it's slightly benched out to make a flatter trail surface. And then that way the trail can switch back up the up the hill rather than going straight up, which creates erosion.
And you you think you could achieve the 15% or less slope because my recollection is the backside of the property in some locations gets pretty steep.
Um, I think it it might be difficult, but I don't think it is impossible.
Is there anything that prohibits us from having a rough trail, Mr. Rupert? A rough, steeper trail? We there's no prohibition for the for the land trust and they have some heat spots. And I don't know that we have anything.
Well, this is not in land trust. We own.
Right. I understand. I understand that. But I'm just saying that for other trails in town, there's nothing that prohibits it.
But it was like.
Their properties.
My question was in response to his comment about trying to keep it at 15% or less to reduce the opportunities for erosion. Which I which I think is a tremendous goal because that means that maintenance is also reduced. And soil is not moving, you know, from the trail into the intermittent water course or the pond or a pool or whatever it ends up being classified as.
Because if you reduce the topsoil in the other degree that slows down the water, you're running water down.
It moves faster.
Absolutely.
With the terrain, it can be called a hiking trail rather than a walking trail. I think we should we should suggest a terrain that requires a little more than just a leisurely walk. And let everybody know upfront. That just eliminates thinking down the road of people saying, well, we want it wider. So it's easier for us to walk. No, this is a hiking trail. Suck it up. Put your hiking boots on in.
We have we have that that type of trail as we leave the heritage farm and we head down to the rail rail trail. It's a hiking trail. It's not just a walking trail. You should have sturdy shoes. Is there other questions, Mr. Rupert?
Comment. So one of you know, if assuming that the board of selectmen agrees that you can move forward with this project at some point. My suggestion is that you also have a conversation with. My suggestion is that you also have a conversation with the fire department. Because, you know, sometimes on these trails that we have, fire department gets tasked to rescue people who get injured, walking or hiking. And we want to be sure that they have appropriate trail markings that they can find so that they can find somebody. And that, you know, possibly if we're constructing a trail. Uh, we may want to be sure that it's wide enough for them to be able to access it. With a U T V by removing some sort of barrier. Yeah. So it's just a consideration as you, you know, move forward in your planning process.
Oh, I'm sure Mr. Dixon would appreciate hearing from you.
Then we can, we can help you be in touch if that's more helpful for you.
Any other questions for Shepherd? And at this time, do you need a vote from the board to be able to move forward?
I just need the benefit. To, yeah, I guess that would be the, what do you know, I think?
With no objection, uh, do I hea- hea- hear a motion to accept Mr. Livingston's proposal for. A trail on the Strangland property of approximately point seven miles. As an Eagle Scout project.
I I move, we we would approve the hiking trail that is being proposed. And um with uh the stipulations we put in of of meeting with uh proper wetlands individuals. In other town. Agencies that yet you may require to to have approvals from and.
Do I have a second? Michael Mike Aramita, thank you. Uh, if are there any further questions before I call for the vote?
Yeah. But is this, is this a town or a land trust property?
This currently is the a town piece of property.
Okay.
Thank you.
Many of the other trails that have been built, Bob, in the in the recent years have been on land trust property and they have. Uh, quite a bit of experience on creating trails and uh Shepherd has reached out to Mrs. Marion and has. Uh, tapped into her expertise on trail building. In the his planning.
Okay. Forgive me, but what item are you on agenda wise?
Jumping around with apologies, uh, we are down on six A. And he is, he was an add-on to that, uh, we opened the agenda and uh we added him for six A.
Thank you.
Thank you. All that I will call for the vote, all in favor of this proposal, say aye. I am a yes also, Bob Petro.
Uh, thing.
Abstain, Adam? Alright, we have three yeses and two abstentions. Uh, it has been approved, uh, thank you very much and a lovely presentation, thank you for your your thoughtfulness and. You have more work to do, God, God willing, the creeks don't rise, that it's gonna go smoothly for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time, because we have more uh people who have come to speak to us, I'm going to jump down. Uh, we are going to go to new under new business, uh, both D and E, because we have the chairman and vice chairman of the. Good night now, uh, of the Veterans Com- Commission, if you'd like to come to the table. Kathy Walsh and Barry Sterns. Good evening. Kathy Walsh is the Kathy Kathy Walsh is the chairman of the new Veterans Commission, who has met three times. Yes, ma'am, the floor is yours.
Okay, the first request that we put in, I put a letter in that we were um received. A request that we named a. Small piece of street that is currently unnamed, as I understand, behind the monument. And the honor roll. As Veterans Way, that was unanimously decided in our committee meeting and we voted on it. And we feel that that would really. Um, for our veterans, it was actually brought forward by one of our veterans in the town requests that. And honestly, our veterans have really sacrificed their lives for our country. And the liberties that we have had, um, they participated in numerous. Places in the town and it really would be a very small tribute to continue this honor to our veterans.
So this is the, my understanding is a small piece of road in front of uh the Tut Hill Home. Uh, that goes between Bolton Center Road and Heburn Road.
Yeah.
Heading westbound.
Yeah.
And east.
And it is currently, as I understand, that it's all town property.
And it's unnamed at the present time, so it's not, as though we, it would be. An issue of changing the name or an address for any property.
I don't think there's any address on it, right?
Correct. Yeah. Other questions for uh Mrs. Walsh and Mr. Sterns?
Maybe just for Jim, um. Where would a sign go and would there be one at each end? And what what's our normal protocol?
I mean, typically, we we typically, we would put one at each end. Um, and we try to put it in a location that it's visible, but doesn't impede the sidewalk.
Could it, could it be something other than a conventional street sign, something maybe a little more emphasis, like a lower sign?
Think it, I think it could be.
Something a little more attractive, in other words.
Be two-sided.
Or.
So that we don't have multiple signposts?
Yeah, and I can certainly talk with the highway foreman about that and and bring some proposals back to the board selected. Uh, to discuss.
So one of the things that has been asked by another veteran, uh, was that if we're looking at it, they would like it not to say veterans and then way. Put up at the corner as we do with street and lane and that type of thing, but it would be named. Linear or up and down Veterans Way with the word way on the bottom.
I'm sure we can order it that way.
Bob DePetro?
Yeah, does it require a state approval?
It is a town road and it is, it is the town's responsibility to name their roads. And there would be certain protocol if we were changing the name of a road. That we would be required to follow, I I my is my understanding, uh, but in this instance, there is no, this is a no-named. Stretch of pavement.
And I'm informed by the highway foreman that it's not a piece of asphalt that we include for town aid road.
It has its own life. We pay for it from top to bottom.
Right.
Jeremy, do you have a question?
No, not at all.
Mr. Moore?
No.
At this time, I would ask for a motion to a to approve the naming of the short piece of unnamed road. Uh, between Bolton Center Road and Heburn Road, do I have a motion?
Me, I want to make that motion.
Bob Mora, who is also a veteran, uh, and do I have a second? Very much, Mister Mister Teller, seconds, is there any further discussion? Then we'll call for the role, all in favor, please say aye.
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 It is unanimous, thank you very much. Moving on then, uh, and thank you for the for that research and and bringing that forward. Uh, what it will move on to eat, the veterans tax exemption, and again, we have uh Mrs. Walsh and. Do you want to introduce yourself, sir? Would you introduce yourself? Another veteran?
This, which is, I'll tell you a little bit, sorry about that too.
And we do, do you have to ask you to speak up?
In my whole neighborhood. Out of the ninety, we have five veterans.
Wow.
This time, coming myself. And once I agreed to go on this commission, I talked to them. And said, you know, what do you, what do you, what do you think the town could do for you? And every one of them. Focused about this veteran's tax exemption. Now, these people are all, oh, the veterans are older than the average people, you know, and they, they. Where they are, but this is something that they thought would help them as a state in Bolton. This is, there's, there's two parts we're talking about tonight. Veteran's tax property exemption, which allows you to reduce the assessed value of the property on way of veteran. And a spouse, the veteran passes away, both has the same. First one is a brand new one, it was passed in the state legislature in October. Um, and it became effective October thirty first, two thousand twenty-two, which is an income-related taxes. Which is different from what we have. Um, it allows a best thing. Um, is less than fifty thousand, one hundred dollars, that's that's the uh. They sent you a summary of the of the. Equals to ten percent of the assessed value. Um, we have no way of knowing how many veterans will apply for this, how many will qualify for it. Manchester recently. They have no idea about what what. But it doesn't impact, but it can impact budget because it takes away from the grant. So, um, we would like to see that enacted though. Both of the commission enacted for the next fiscal year, so uh, if the town doctors. And the whole, all that explains all the things that should be set up, I use the application process. That's connected public act number twenty-two dash thirty-four and section thirty-three. The second part is the existing. That's the exemption, which exists under connected general statute twelve dash eighty-one. Every town or records or property in town, it is fifteen hundred dollar reduction in the assessed value of the property. It also has an option allowing, promising that local option if they want to add to that. And at this, at this time, I believe you can add up to ten thousand dollars. You know, we tell you sort of how the number of veterans you are, when I first started looking at this, I had no idea. And uh, so I went and found some information, it said that seven point one percent of the population, United States are veterans. I just applied that to our population, I grew up with a number that was around three hundred fifty veterans. A friend of mine wanted to follow up with the. It's three hundred sixty-one, and chastised me because I was off by now. About three hundred fifty-one current veterans getting this exempt. A fifteen hundred dollar exemption off your assessed value of place to. These are about a. That's what it costs the town to do, but it's supposed to be reimbursed for fifteen hundred dollars in the state. So that amounts to about three hundred sixty-one homes, that amount. So I don't know where or how that money is coming to now, you think it is coming to. That money should be coming to these children, dogs, that.
The finance director tells me that we receive between two uh two thousand and twenty-six hundred dollars. Per year as a result of that grant. So it's her number and your number are not the same. They're off by a significant amount.
I don't know why.
Could be that some of them haven't even bothered to apply for. No, no, but you, a veteran has to apply to the uh, to the, I believe, the assessor.
Oh, they do, oh, that part they do.
Part, yeah, so because I'm not sure. Thank you.
I can't find anywhere, I mean, it may be coming in as part of something.
And we don't, we don't receive that much rep. For that.
I would like to.
We haven't had time to really get into the.
Cause I didn't take a quick look, I can't even find.
Statute, I mean, the statute's long and I believe it's. The report, end of each year.
Yeah.
In order to get that money, I don't know if that's being done, I don't know what that veteran's rent. You, in the last budget, it was three thousand dollars, this budget was eighteen hundred. I don't know the exact number, so I'm not sure what, when I see that, that's what I think is talking about.
And you think this is twelve dash?
I think it's, I think that may be a problem with getting reimbursement.
But that off of twelve dash eighty-one, I haven't looked up.
Yeah.
Okay, um, would Jim, would that be? Some, a question for Lori Bushnell or for Jill or both?
So would be both.
So, um, uh, would the board mind if we ask Mr. Rupert to study the issue some more? And you can bring it back before the board, uh, the next meeting, so we have that detail. Uh, do you have a proposal, Mrs. Sterns?
Well, yeah, then what we're proposing is the the um. Local option, uh, the, I guess, up to ten thousand dollars. And there's an ordinance in the town ordinance is passed in nineteen eighty-five. Which added a thousand dollars on top of the original fifteen hundred, so at that time in nineteen eighty-five, exempting was twenty-five hundred dollars. It's now forty-five hundred dollars. And I could not find anywhere where. How that changed, well, I believe by statute. Or selectmen can change it. More along the way, they did change, they added another two thousand dollars out of that. Um, I look back at some, I'm calling my tax records, I got, I found something from two thousand one. Where in two thousand one, it was forty-five hundred dollars, but sometime between nineteen eighty-five and one, beginning.
Is that before Barry Sterns was on the board of selectmen? No, is that during your tenure?
I think it was before.
Cause you were voted that time.
I don't, but I don't really, we, you know, I made that, I went on a horse.
I can't remember.
I'm sure we've probably done, um, we were joking, somebody has to look through the minutes.
I will go look through the minutes, I, it's gonna take a while, but we'll research it.
It's there, so they end up. That's our concern, what I can do is we like to see things. And in the, in your pocket, you've got a couple things of books called chart of impact. And the first one. Doesn't take into account the state reimbursement at all, second one, no. Um, and what I'm gonna ask for tonight is that. The next, factor with the next fiscal year.
Within in one year?
In one, if not. Then phase it in, that's most in the past phases in, for the next five years, so the end of five years, it reaches that ten thousand dollars. If you do it all at once. The impact and take into account. It all one, this is based on, on. Full tax revenue, I rounded up to eighteen million for the full year. And I use the forty mil tax rate that we have now, this contains these numbers, depending what the mill rate is and what the total property. Go to the ten thousand, the cost of the town is a launch revenue of hundred forty-four thousand. Eight tenths of one percent of total revenue. And if you divide that by three hundred sixty-one veterans, it's four hundred. We go from forty-five to six to seven. I, I think that, I I know it's it's money and it's, money is always very important, but um. These, uh, these three hundred sixty one homes that are, are only different veterans. A lot of them, including most of them, have been in the sound of the great forty five year. They've been paying a lot of profit tax in this town. So, uh, I think it's, um, um, it, it, there's nothing to it. There's no income restrictions on this. You can put an income restriction on it if you want to do that by the.
You can.
You can.
You can. I, I think it's a poor idea to do that.
Yeah.
People who serve, serve.
I agree with you, but it's there and I want to make sure that you know what's there.
You're saying you can't put it.
You can't put it.
You can't.
And it's, it's got to follow whatever the state guidelines are. And it's probably a fifty thousand one hundred number, which the state's using. This other one too, I would think, but I don't know for sure.
Are you ready for questions?
So, huh.
You ready to ask any questions, Jim? Mr. Armita, Mr. DePietro, do you have questions for Mrs. Sterns on virtual?
No.
Mr. Peter?
Will these papers that are in the packet become part of a permanent record? Or they just reference material?
Kathy?
Every agenda packet becomes permanent.
All right, if so, I would like where he, Barry puts, Mr. Sterns puts I. When I first read that, I wondered who I was.
Oh, so you want his name put in there?
I rounded off.
Yeah.
Okay, so replace I with Barry Sterns' name.
I would.
Okay.
I think we should have the author on the bottom and his title as well.
Okay.
Would be comfortable with that?
Oh, yeah.
Good catch.
Thank Bob.
Why, Bob? You don't think I said this?
So at this time, um, because we are beginning budget negotiations, I'd like to say, um, thank you very much for this information. Bring forward to the, to the board. We will, uh, look at it, um, as part of our budget deliberations. Um, and if there's no further comment from Adam, anybody else have a comment?
Well, I do have a comment, but I.
Sir?
I want to understand what exactly we're doing now. We're, what we're doing now is the twelve dash eighty one exemption at fifteen hundred dollars. Reduction across the board for any veteran who applies for it regardless of their income or their circumstances.
It's at forty five hundred.
Forty five.
Boy, it's up to forty.
Thousand dollar local option on it. Which has been put in his steps.
And we don't know.
The state won, portion of it is the fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, so at some point, the board voted to increase that.
That's the first time they did it.
Because I, the statute I looked at said it was a thousand, but maybe it's been.
You know, originally. My memory doesn't. Yeah, I know. Yeah, we did it.
Because if you print it out, you get twenty eight pages.
Yeah.
Because there's all these gaps. This is an ordinance.
Yeah.
It raised it by a thousand dollars.
Right.
And then it was raised by two thousand, probably by a vote of the board.
Right.
But, uh, um, that's, that's all I can find, so.
Applies to the spouse as well.
This is a surviving.
Surviving.
And in the case of there are two veterans in one home, there's only one exemption.
And, and if you get the, as far as I can read, if you get the income related exemption, you cannot get the. The income related one is actually would be a high exemption.
And so that is, at present time, for non-income related with the new law, at the forty five hundred. The veteran's household would pay one hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah.
On their total tax bill for their resident. Or their vehicle, if they only, if they're rented.
Apply that to your.
Thank you.
So if we do, I, well, I think what we should study this, but I think we should, um, ask the finance director for.
I agree.
Yeah, what, what's it mean? What is the state? Well, first of all, what is the state reimbursement available? And have we been taking advantage of it to the full extent of what we're available, what's available? But then also to look at both of these programs and what makes sense for them. I much prefer an income based program to apply across the board. Personally, but that's because I. Lots of people struggle paying their property taxes from the income that they have. It certainly would. It's always legitimate to consider veterans as a separate category, but I don't think a veteran whose income is a million dollars a year should get a benefit. Benefit like this, or even if their income is two hundred thousand dollars a year. And, you know, this is already based on AGI, which is not gross income, but gross income reduced by various deductions. So. Now, I, I think every citizen who has low income struggles with paying their property taxes. And not all of them get. The ability to have an exemption, so.
Not all of them, but we do have the circuit breaker. Um. Uh, we will, thank you for the research and thank you for the, um, presentation and the breakdown. We will look further at public act twenty two dash thirty four, section thirty three. And take a look at that as well, because it, because shall be entitled to an exemption. The word shall is there? I guess we would adopt it, uh, but shall sounds like it's mandatory.
No, the statute actually doesn't say that. That's not a quote from statute. The new statute says. That the town can adopt that and make it. That's how I read it. It's not mandatory.
Shall be entitled.
We can provide for this ten percent exemption. We're not.
I haven't seen the whole statute, so my apologies. I went.
I looked at it because I was surprised to see that it was mandated, but it's not. It's a, it's a local option.
Maybe the only thing that's mandated is a fifteen hundred.
Okay.
So.
But, and they're supposed to reimburse it. They said it was reimbursed now.
What was reimbursed?
They said it was supposed to reimburse the town for the expense of that.
How much? And where did you get to the twenty one thousand?
Three hundred sixty one times.
Yeah, you're talking to.
This almost sounds like the way they, the state does pilot funds.
I'm not sure.
It's new math.
I wanted to put it out.
New math, yes.
Like I say, it depends on what the mill rate was, what that was. But if the sale was in. In twenty something years.
It is.
So we didn't get it. And you probably wouldn't be able to get it back now anyways.
No, they don't like to reach back.
Thank you very much for listening to us.
Thank you.
For those that, that have joined us, the Veterans Commission meets the first Thursday of the month at one thirty here at Town Hall. And, uh, they welcome veterans and non-veterans to come, uh, and speak at public comment. Or, um, if they have an issue that they can get to Chairman Walsh and, um, they can put it on one of their agendas.
And just quick, we, we are a random commission. We're just feeling our way here. We've talked to about, we do meet in the afternoon because we're all retired and stuff. But if sometime down the little, we're probably going to want to have a meeting at night once in a while to invite the community to come in. In my experience though, with, with veterans is a very reluctant community. I went through this when I was, like, when I went to college, I worked in a veteran's. Getting helping veterans get the benefits. And you actually had to go and talk to the, they have a recipe, you're basically, you get this, or did you get that? Most of the time, I didn't know I could get it, didn't know anything about it. I was surprised to learn that there were three hundred sixty one people in this town that are getting it. Any more.
Wait, I got an email of, for you to take back to the commission from post ninety five in Hebron, the American Legion post ninety five. And they were very complimentary to our board for creating this commission on behalf of veterans in the town, because we do not have a, an American Legion or a V F W.
I'm leaving town at the end of January.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Feed that. Oh, wonderful. Absolutely. Thank you both, and I'll see you on Thursday. Uh, thank you for your efforts. Um, I would like to then also, we will skip around to now go back to seven A. Josh, hi. Josh Hall is with us virtually. He has, uh, provided us in our packet with the four town brochure presentation that you have. The color, not color glossy, but, uh, nice, well done, um, presentation. Good night. So this is, uh, the next iteration. We've seen a draft one before this. Josh, good evening.
Hello, good evening. Just had some issues with my camera. Fixed it. Should be all good.
Oh, very good. Welcome aboard. Would you like to, uh, make an opening statement, sir?
Yes, so in case of, for those that have not met me, my name is Josh Hall. I'm an M P A intern from the School of Public Policy at UConn. And since September, I've been working, um, trying to implement the Four Town Economic Vitality Action Plan. So I'm a shared intern between the towns of Bolin, Cometry, Mansfield, and Tallinn. One of my current tasks right now is to help develop mini brochures that'll be able to complement the main brochure that's being created by our, um, marketing consultant, DKA. And the packet that you have in front of you is three proposed mini brochures on the different themes that are being touched on in our plan. Um, the first one is the agricultural brochure, second is arts and culture, and the third is outdoor recreation.
Run that by me. The first one is. Cow on one side and the.
Uh, the agriculture.
Grown local on the second side. Front and back.
Yeah, it should be front and back.
Okay. Uh, we just, it got printed out page by page and.
Oh, okay.
Uh, that's why I'm just being clear. The second, okay, would you describe the second one again?
The second one would be, uh, arts and culture. And the third should be the, uh, outdoor recreation.
The arts and culture, the front side would have, uh, someone playing the guitar on the left hand, upper left hand corner. And the backside would, uh, have on the upper left hand side, having fun.
Yep.
So that's the second one. Thank you. And the third one?
Uh, outdoor creation, so it should have a picture of like a sunflower field in the front. And then the second page would have, welcome to the great outdoors with trails, the outdoors and lakes.
Uh, questions for Josh? Josh, can you give us a, a, a background here on, just quickly, um. These three flyers?
Yes, so, um, the, some of the background is that these are supposed to cover the individual themes. So, for example, looking at, um, the great outdoors, it's supposed to cover all the four different towns. Our, um, outdoor assets such as the abundance of trails. So there's like a little paragraph on, on top saying, um, the different open spaces, that there's over fifty between the four different towns. And below is like a collage of the different pictures. Um, one is from Bull, uh, Heritage Farm, the nice open fields and then, uh. Sorry, my computer's being very slow right now. And on the other side, the great.
Six pictures?
Yes. And then the great outdoors, like overall summary, including the different tasks that we've been trying to implement, such as incorporating trails and C T Trail Finder. Um, promoting and starting outdoor recreational events as well as potentially creating a comprehensive open space plan for the overall region. Now, in the end would be lakes, so between the four towns is over five different lakes. Just realized as a typo, please disregard the, the first sentence messed up. And with the arts and culture brochure, um. We wanted to go over different cultural assets, so we kind of played with, uh, the four towns, like historical assets. So Heritage Farm is one, uh, Nathan Hale Homestead in Cometry was the other one that we decided to try to mention. And then in like the town of Tallinn, we mentioned the county jailhouse and other historical assets. So that's what the, uh, that's in the arts and culture. Under having fun.
Not under trails and, okay.
Under having.
And in the center, which is more than just art, because people mistake art as just like painters, art encompasses a lot of different types of, um, professions. Such as musicians, actors, sculptors. And between the four different towns, there's a plethora of them. So some of these photos, such as the camera in the books, those are temporary photos, because I'm still waiting to hear back from the town of Mansfield on their art photos. They're very slow. So some of these photos are placeholders. Just wanted to make a note of that.
And then. Can you help me out with one question? It's both in Cometry, Mansfield, and Tallinn. Um, why is it those four towns that are in this brochure?
Uh, so it's supposed to help represent the overall region, so, um, each brochure. Mentions different stuff that all four towns have together.
I see.
Four towns developed a collaborative.
Oh, thank you.
That is working on this together.
And who would be paying for the printing of such a brochure?
Will be shared. We, we've shared the expenses thus far.
And how long has this collaboration been in?
Uh, right now, the plan was developed back in twenty twenty, in the July of twenty twenty. And this collaboration's been, um, for the past two years. I know it's twenty twenty three, so technically three years at this point.
Um, might I make a suggestion, Josh?
Yes.
Uh, would you mind putting this in front of a writer, uh, to look at the prose? Because I think some of it is excellent and some of it could be perhaps fine tuned.
Of course.
Uh, I was looking at the, perhaps the one under lakes, uh, as an example, and maybe a wordsmith might give you, the layout, I think is great. I think perhaps so wordsmith might give you a little hand on.
Yeah, I quickly realized that.
Appeal? Readability?
Yeah, it's different when. It's different when you have it printed out, when, because when you have it printed out, you notice all the spelling mistakes that you've done, even when you have it like online.
Very good.
And, and Josh, these are intended to be trifold brochures, correct?
Yes.
Different panels.
Yes.
Which, which I think it helps for clarity purposes to mention that.
Yeah, so these would be, all of them would be trifles, so, um, the trifle to be, when you have it in front of you, probably like three inches wide and like. Eight inches tall, and you'd be able to flip it open and be like a panel.
But Peter, would you like to ask a question, Josh?
Yes. I would. I would like to realize that I'm probably a little behind in this. But this is all kind of new to me for some reason. I'm curious what the context, how this will be used and to whom and for whom. How will it be used?
So.
What's the thought on that?
So right now, part of the plan is to help set up booths at different town events. Um, such as like last month, Bolin had their winter fair. In the future, the hope is to have a setup booth at these events to help let the residents of each communities know about this initiative. And to have, um. let the residents of each communities know about this initiative and to have stuff to pass out. So this would be one of the things that would be able to pass out to town residents to help educate them and let them know about the four town economic vitality plan and the different themes associated with that plan, as well as the different projects that we see.
Just to follow up, we have our own representative who I'm surprised is not here tonight from Bolton. You know Milton Hathaway? Pam Hathaway, yeah? Why is Milton Hathaway here to support the idea?
At the moment, at the moment, I do not believe we have an economic development commission. And I don't believe, I believe his term ended, there were only two members left on the commission, and it has not been refilled.
Was it regional?
Mr. Hathaway belongs to the Tallent County Chamber of Commerce, who actually participates in the meetings of this group.
And he's also, oh, I guess his wife is the head of Tallent Agriculture, the farm Commission, Farm Bureau. Okay, I'm sorry. Does, does that help?
Yeah, I think, yeah, it would be helpful for him to be aware of the efforts Josh is doing.
We, I guess we don't know that he isn't. But well, that, thank you for that. We'll reach out to him and get it to him. Kathy, would you add that to an email to him? Thank you. Good, good thought. Mike Armita?
Yeah, is, is there any thought in getting this out beyond the four towns to entice people into our four communities to see things and do things, as opposed to just handing it out amongst the four of us? It reminds me of the old thing in East Hartford where they did away with sending people out to lure in business into the community. Instead, they tried to lure northern business from northern East Hartford to the south end of town and vice versa. And it, you know, when you, we take away funds to attract business, that's what you get. You try and steal from either end of the town. And that's what this strikes me as, where, you know, if it's not pushed to other communities to entice people here, it's just us playing with ourselves, so to speak.
Yes.
I think that it will be, and unfortunately, you know, I'm not sure that these are questions that Josh has equipped the answer. He really is working on these, these particular projects for us. But it sounds to me that it'd be really important to have Patrice Karsten, who was our our economic, you know, and town planner, come, come to a meeting to have this as a topic of discussion. She has a better overall picture and has been involved in this from day one. I participate in the meetings as often as I possibly can, which are monthly. I provide some direction and guidance when I'm asked for certain aspects of this. And, but, but it sounds to me like overall, you know, it's probably time for the board to get an update from Patrice, who is our town representative on this committee.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, just one quick comment to Josh here. You know, what he's done looks nice. I, I, I think you, you're on the right track with the three different topics that you're trying to push. The, the layout looks nice, and I think you're doing a very good job. As Pam said, maybe a wordsmith might help a little bit with some of the, you know, punching it up a little. But I think, you know, what you've done so far is a very good, very good start on this project. And, and I commend you for that.
Thank you.
No, I, I concur. And I think Mike, you hit on a very good point that part of the plan of distribution should be, where can you get this at a place where people will congregate in these brochures there for them to pick up, other than right in town? Could be on the outskirts of these towns where people are coming in and out, like, like the mobile station, for example. Maybe in town, that's an area where people coming from Vernon, Manchester, whatever, it'd be a great spot for something.
There's the information building at the Wyndham Chamber of Commerce on Main Street in Wyndham. That's the type of place that these could be also. Adam, do you have anything else to add?
The only thing I would say is that a piece of literature like this is only useful if it leads people to something. Because otherwise, it's just something they stick in their car and just throw away when they get home. So beyond just where you're going to distribute it, because it's, there's lots of places you give it out at farmers markets, you could put it, you know, give it to realtors to show to people when they show homes. In the, in the county, there's lots of different ways of getting it out there. They're all sort of maybe less effective than, say, a television ad or a Facebook ad or any of those. But if you're going to do something like this, it has to be useful to the end user, the person who receives it, who picks it up at a farmer's market, or who picks it up at somebody's office, or at a town clerk's office. And what does it have to have? It has to have websites for the organizations that you're publicizing. So if you're saying we have arts, organizations put the names and the websites on it. If you're saying we have farmers markets, put the name and the, and the website, or the way that they're going to find it, whether it's this, it's this Saturday, every Saturday in, in the summer, or whatever it is. If all it does is have a picture and say, we have this thing, but it doesn't give somebody a way to find the thing, it's a piece of.
In today's world, the record website is probably the simplest way to get everything.
And make sure that you tell the organizations that you're trying to publicize, or the events that you're trying to publicize, hey, if you have a splash page, give it to us. We'll put it in this brochure so that somebody's going to find it. To me, a nice brochure is, ends up, because I know, because I, you get attracted to stuff like that. You pick it up, and then you get home and you realize there's nothing in this that I can actually use, because it doesn't tell me how to find it. Heritage, how to find.
That is a good point. And I'll just say, because I'm also, I float in and out of the committee when I have time, but there is an overall. So what this started as was, it was a four-town initiative to start a community calendar to bring more people to this area and, and provide events and stuff like that. They are still working on that calendar. The calendar is what they started with. And I can tell you, we went round and round for a year, and they still haven't gotten it. So we're kind of focused, they're kind of pulling the focus out and spreading people out now and saying, okay, you're going to work on this, you're going to work on that. But I think that's a good point, Josh, that the websites or whatever we come to with this community calendar, that's going to be showcased on every town's website, or on one website, however, needs to be on there so that people know where to go. Right now, we're looking at four different town, different websites. We're looking at possibly connecting them, and if that's possible, and how we can all put our stuff together. So I know that is one of the things that they originally started with, to try and draw people in there. Using like when Tallent County Chamber has a meeting, they're bringing things to us and the other towns and saying, okay, what events do you have coming up so that we can list them on our calendar to showcase for everybody at that point? And that's what we are looking to do.
I can appreciate that, because some of these farmers markets, we have found are fluid. Some years they're very active, some years they need, I'm going to use another town next door to us, that's not listed in this, but they, they sometimes will have two farmers markets, and sometimes they will have six farmers markets. And Bolton is one that's had farmers markets, and then we haven't had a farmer, once a year, and then we haven't had a farmers market. So it's hard to put on a permanent doc like this that's going to go out to, we're not sure where, but a calendar, an events calendar, a community events calendar for the four town would be brilliant to add to this. So Josh, I guess I would almost think about holding off.
Yep.
Use this as a, as a draft right now and hold off until there is a wording for a community calendar or something like that to add to it. But I think that's very good. Kathy, thank you. Adam and Kathy. I would like to just add one thing. Josh, on the page, on the arts and culture one, at the top, right-hand side, where it says Connecticut's country style, it's hard to read because the colors are so similar.
The black and the blue.
The black and the blue, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Does it like it?
You have to make noise.
I'm right here. I want you to take a little.
Yeah, yeah, I can see it.
Okay, just so, just for making colors pop, so it's easier, easy read?
Actually, I would just be consistent, use the same one. Why?
You need to have it a little different, otherwise people aren't going to pick it up.
But as far as the logo, sort of thing.
Very good. Do you need anything further from us, Josh, or is this really just an informational time?
No, this is just an informational time to give like an update on one of the projects that I've been working on. So that way the first selectmen know.
I'd like to say thank you very much then, because more on our agenda and the hour has gotten, gotten later. I'd like to say thank you very much, and we're going to move on with our agenda, unless there's anything you'd like to add, Josh?
Nope. I just want to say thank you for taking the time and looking at the three different brochures, and thanks for the feedback there. Very helpful.
Your efforts, sir.
Thank you, Josh.
wishing you well. Because we do have Mrs. Marion with us, we're going to continue on with number seven, the new business under the grant awards. And with the board's indulgence, we're going to skip down to the trail grant for the parking lot near Munson's. Would you like to come up?
Would all of you like to have a map of the parcel where I, I've been, I've mentioned before, it would be a possible parking area?
I know where it is.
You do? I know also, but thank you.
I got, I took hers. Thank you.
So this is a three-point.
You have the point to that.
Yep. Perfect.
So it's right next to the Munson's Employee Parking Lot. It's 3.4 acres. It was, there used to be a house on it a long time ago. It was taken, the house was taken with all of the other property that was taken for a proposed six. Yes. When you, there is a, there's a curb cut. I, I don't know whether, I'm sure the DOT would have to be involved in this, but there is a little asphalt apron that goes back in 20 feet maybe, and then it's a fairly level lot. The trees are, I'd say immature, but they're, they're 30, 40 years old now. So there would have to be some clearing done, maybe some grading. So the, there's $9 million, as I mentioned, in this recreational trail program administered through the DEEP. And the Connecticut Greenway Council is an advisory council to the DEP on this, and they, they are the ones who look at the, all of the and they make recommendations to the DEP for the grant winners. It's a pretty extensive application, but I'm willing to take it on. And I, I think that this, this is 170 acres that, that Bolton has owned since 2016. We haven't been able to open it to the public because there is no parking. And it's a, it's a beautiful property. Some groups, I know the Conservation Commission has had a couple of walks back there. The Bolton Land Trust has had a walk back there, but it's only been on just on one-off basis. And it would be great to get, to be able to say to the public, here is your public parking, and then come and enjoy it. And I know Brent Merson and I gave a presentation to you all, maybe three years ago now. We talked, telling you about how we've been walking through there, and we have a proposed trail, but we don't, we've never blazed it because it's, it's not a public trail yet. And I'm, I'm sure that we could get volunteers together to blaze the trail and to make it a permanent trail, once we can say where you can park. So I really, I feel like it's really important to get it, to get a park these things. And I think that Joe Dillon would have to and a cost estimate and a timeline. And if, if he, if you were to authorize him to do that, I would be glad to break the grant. Jim and I could work on that together, if Jim's willing.
Absolutely.
Questions for Mrs. Marion from the board? Mike Armita?
No, I'm very comfortable if Glenn wants to take that.
Pedro?
20% match.
Yes, it requires a 20% match, which can be in kind also. And when the, the town of Bolton did get a grant under this program a few years ago for the study of between the post office heading out toward Coventry, and that, so that was, that was this same program. And so there was an 80/20. Yeah, 80/20. And I believe that Bolton put very little cash in at that point. I believe it was all, it was all in-kind services.
Yep.
So.
Design fees, and if we, and if we did things like, you know, the tree clearing and that sort of thing, you know, we'd be able to, you know, get credit for that as part of the, as part of the match.
Yeah. It's a good site, because like you mentioned, it, it actually has a fairly, that spot is fairly well.
It's got a great sightline.
Yeah, you don't have a lot of elevation issues to deal with. It's just some clearance and, and gaining legal, secured legal access to it.
Compared to the other option we had, the sightline here is tremendously better.
And the guardrail ends right before this little apron too. So that would not have to be removed.
During that, there seems, sounds to be a consensus. Could I have a motion then to allow Mrs. Marion to grant for this particular project?
I think I have a motion to have her with Jim to develop a grant to develop the four more aforementioned site as a parking area for our walking trail. Considered a walking trail, correct?
Yes.
Now, I'm not sure I use the right term now, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would add the caveat that we bring it back to you for final approval before some.
Yes. So, so it's so done. He gave the wording, just added it.
Okay.
Seconded, Adam, or?
Adam got to it before Bob.
Thank you.
So does that mean that it's okay to, may I communicate with Joe Dillon and say?
Well, we got to pass it first.
We're in the discussion phase now.
Yeah, we have, we have a motion before us. Is there any further discussion before I call for the vote? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Now, in, in your, I would just coordinate with you.
Yeah, let me reach out to him first and let him know that the board is taking action, and that the two of us will be reaching out to him. And I think the first step may be that he, he may need to have a survey crew out there to do a little bit of work. Get some topography and some property lines identified.
And contact DOT.
Yeah. But I'll, I'll be in touch with you as soon as I reach out to.
Good. I hope we can make.
Adam?
How far is it from the apron to where the trail is actually off?
The trail, we can see the back corner of the employee parking lot.
Yep.
The trail is just off the edge of that. It's, it's really pretty close. So, yes, it'll be easy to access it from, from this parking area. This parking area actually might encompass some of where the trail goes.
But that's, that's Munson's property.
No, I mean, no, on the red, on the red, in the red parcel, but off the corner of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, that little right. I thought you said right behind the parking lot. I'm sorry.
That's nice. So you, you got, you got a business that when you're walking the trail and you need an energy.
Thank you. And if there are no further questions, thank you very much, and thank you for coming back.
Thank you so much. Thanks for putting me further up on the agenda. Yeah, I'm going to go back and see if there's still work over there. Good night.
And please welcome the new pastor. We're fortunate to have him at the Ecumenical Service and have him participate. Please tell him we are grateful. Thank you for Thanksgiving. All right, going backwards now, let's go back to the top. If we wanted to look at the approval of the minutes, if everybody agrees, I had a couple of questions. We are at the present time, December 6. We are at the present time, December 6th meeting. And there was just a tense on page seven, on the first paragraph. Where eight lines down. It says, we are pleased uh Miller Davy came before the board's legislature. We are pleased that and again, the word that. Very simple correction. Dave, I'll catch other things. Adam?
Page two of 11. In the paragraph four, take out the word resolve to from the first line of that paragraph should read, I moved the board of selectmen enter into the time. On page five.
If you hang on just like let Kathy catch up.
Go ahead. No, just keep going.
Five based on Ms. Marion's comments. Joe Dillon after the word Gwen Marion in the first line. Add the word, it appears to the beginning of the second line. Strike out the words she recommends that we do not follow. In the second line. Strike out the words because it in the second line so that we did look at the parking area nearest Bolton collision with Gwen Marion and Joe Dillon. And it appears that location would have a negative impact on the business. Oh, on page E. Paragraph eight D. Five lines down, six lines down.
I'm sorry, what page are we on? I'm sorry, thank you.
I plan to. Where it reads now, it says evaluation. Which should say we have an evaluation from the professional that has a high and low valuation with it. It is about $9,000. Because actually we ended up putting a minimum reserve $1,000. So we got that from that. Those were the ones I caught on December 6.
And if you go back to page two. About two thirds of the way down, it says Sawyer thanks the town attorney and the intern town administrator.
Right.
He's done his internship. He's done. Leading quickly here then Kathy. Is there is there any other?
Like.
Mike. There we go, Bob DePietro. Adam was.
You'll think the only comment or it's not really a question, but my eyes are getting worse and worse. Even with my tears, I have a hard time when you shrink Jim's the town administrator report. I can't read it. Can we keep it one whole page? Rather than shrink it?
Yeah, I I hear what you're saying.
Get me better glasses.
Oh. Um.
Insert it as a doctor.
Yeah, but I don't think I think the problem is do it. So yeah, we'll have to ask them because it doesn't always come from us.
We can. We can add the page.
Yep.
Thank you. Or give me new glasses.
Oh, a new glass. Nah. I'm not signing off on it, buddy, unless you get pairs for me, too.
All right, you got Victor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll move the adoption of the minutes with the added correction.
No further comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Passing unanimously, moving on to B, December 20th, the special AP meeting. Do I hear any corrections or additions?
I move to approve it.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mike Aramita seconds it. Any further comments? Not trying to rush anybody. All in favor then say aye.
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 The passage unanimously.
No.
I'm sorry, four yeses and one essential. At this time, we'll move down to four appointments and resignations. The first thing we have is a very sad member of our administrative assistance family. Who has been enabling us to have some very smooth meetings, consistent agenda and consistent minutes produced for us. She has had to resign for family obligations, and we would like to extend our deep thanks and wishing her and her family better times. And good wishes. Do I have a motion?
Move. I she worked with us when I was planning its own mission and she's best clerk we ever had.
We'd love to keep her. A second, please.
Yeah, I hear.
Bob Mar. Hearing any other further comments? All in favor of accepting with regrets the resignation of Ivan? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The passage unanimously. At this time, we're going to move on to B appointments. The first one, we do not have to take.
We actually have another resignation that came in.
I apologize. I'd like to open the agenda then to accept another resignation. We have been given notice from a resignation from the senior center part time staff, the able, very able Karen Frost, who has decided to retire. It's her second retirement. Retire again and give her notice. Her last workday will be February 3rd, 2023. He has been a big smile and a shining light over at the senior center. If you haven't met her. She's just an absolute woman. And she's been very efficient and thorough in her in her position. Could may I have a motion to accept with regrets the resignation of Karen Frost?
I'll make that motion and with some tank. Thanks for her providing us the 30 day window to help fill that spot.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Adam. Any further discussion? Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. It's unanimous. Moving on to the appointments, the first one. It was by the Board of Finances purview to bring Alan Ashley Phelan. They they made motions and approved her as the newest member to the Board of Finance. She replaced Alex Rivera, who had to resign due to he was moving out of state. Out of town and out of state. So we would like to welcome her to the Board of Finance, and she will fill out the term. Moving on. We will not be voting on Ellen Barnes for the Ethics Board because I reviewed the minutes and we did it in the last minute, that last board meeting. And Jane Prox is new to town, and she said she would be interested in serving on the Board Ethics Board. She lives on Tallinn Road and you have her application interest form in your packet. And at this time, I would entertain any questions or hearing none, I would then entertain a motion to accept Jane onto the Ethics Board, Board of Ethics. Next one.
Make the motion.
Like you're a meter. Like you're a meter.
Okay.
Mike, you made the motion?
Yep.
Thank you. May I have a second?
No, I had had to read it. I was not. I'm sorry, somehow I now now that I have at least some sense of who this young lady is. It probably was, but I've been shuffling here. The cards are mixed. Also, Mike, Mike, you make you made the motion.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Sorry, Bob.
I said it's a unanimous motion. Thank you, Jane, for willing to serve on this commission. It is my intent to, as a side note, to ask the commission to come together in the next by March to review the ordinance and they have not met since 2017, and we have almost all new members. Thank you very much. Moving back up to number five, reports and updates. Properties and facilities report. Oh, I had the time today and was very, very pleased to go over and tour meeting room A and B, the two classrooms that are behind the senior center in that same wing that will be used for numerous things, for meeting rooms and for recreational times, for camp times, our parks and brick park and
Buildings and grounds.
Thank you, buildings. Thank you. It's a time of night, buildings and grounds. I couldn't find the words. Department has been doing an amazing job. They took I took some photos, which I don't have the ability to show you, but an electric blue room. This doesn't even on my mug touch the color. And they have painted it a cream color with a dark Vermont slate for the trim and the base. They put in at a very reasonable cost. Prefabbed changed the sinks from kindergarten level sinks to more of more more older child and adult size usage. And they are also changing out the bathroom that has a commode that is the size for a toddler kindergartner. And they will be putting more of an adult approved size and a new vanity because of the very old condition of the facilities in there, and they're very stained and not in good working order. So I was very pleased to see that one room is done. Please feel free to stop over and take a look at it. Very impressive workmanship and detail these town employees are putting into this, and they're showing great pride. It's just beautiful. Having said that, we're moving on to Bob DePietro. Hi.
I'm sorry. I just curious, who did that work?
Our staff is doing it, Bob.
In house. The carpet and the painting.
Good. Guess that leads me to another question.
Close.
When we when we review the AP AP thing, sometimes it says the name of who's on the check. Sometimes it doesn't. And sometimes it has both who receives the payment as well as the purse. What should it be? It's not consistent.
You're going back to the the minute spot. So we're not quite there yet, Bob. Can you hang on for a minute, sir?
All right.
Also, as properties and facilities, Jim and I met with the Commissioner of the Department of Revenue and Services and two men in his department. And we had a discussion as to when we move forward with with the board's approval, looking for funding for different major projects. And the question was if we were to renovate or to build a new town hall. Two of the people there had experiences in creating or building new town halls. And so we had a discussion as to possible areas to look for resources. So that was very beneficial. And the last item is the discussion we had last time about the truck sales of the $9,000 discrepancy. And we were going for 15. That was not put out for the month of December just because of staff being in and out, and we wanted to be on deck for receiving any of the bid offers. So we'll be going out possibly at the end of the week. Let's move on then. Unless Jimmy has something to add to that?
Nope.
Move on to B. That was the Department of Revenue Services. I'm sorry, go back to my two budget report. Jim?
This largely unchanged since our last AP meeting. We're still watching those line items that are highlighted in blue. We know why we're slightly overexpensed in some of those categories and don't have tremendous concern at this point. We will likely be coming to you with some transfer requests in the future to get things more in line, but nothing of great concern.
Questions for Jim?
Nope.
Adam, Bob?
No.
Very good. Certainly you can reach him if you need to. And any member of the public that has a question, they can call him. We can find the answer for you. Moving on then. Considering act upon the AP and budget transfers. Mike, Mike Aramita, sir.
Yes, on page three, we have Brown and Brown of Connecticut Consulting Work. What in what is it?
Yeah, they are. They are our insurance consultants.
Okay.
They've been part of our team for a very, very long time.
And going going along with what Bob was bringing up before. Is there a way to give us just a little more information on this? Like if it said under that insurance consultant, you know?
We'll ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
I did have a question on page eight. And we talked about the renovation supplies for room B at the natural municipal center, which I had just spoken about. $1,647.86. The total is $1,647.86 and the vendor total is 2,000.
So that probably was something that they put on the buildings and grounds account at Lowe's. And so you're seeing one piece of it in that line item?
It's a $300 difference.
No, it's the 420 added to the 1647 because it's both on it's everything on.
I apologize.
He does it by vendors.
Right.
Thank you.
It just happened to be the same vendor supplied the concrete for something else.
That was the post for the
And the windy chords and the Christmas lights, one step chap.
I thought it went with the epipiece. Thank you.
Yeah, it's the total of the two together on the credit card.
I did. I did have a question about the the on page nine, Municipal Emergency Services. Is that right? That one helmet was $762 and a pair of gloves was $1,600 or is that holy cow?
They're they are expensive because they have to meet certain standards and very rigorous testing.
Starting to look like Pentagon procurement at that.
Jim?
I
I believe it.
Mike, Mike, go ahead.
I mean, would you like?
Yeah, the the hang on my my thing just turned sideways on me. Helmets are not $762. Helmets normally run, well, at least the ones that the fire departments bought in the last one I bought myself, they're about $350. Plus, if you get goggles and things, so that's probably two helmets and the gloves. And the gloves, we, we bought a, well, the fire department bought a significant number in different sizes. So that's not just one pair of gloves for $1,600. That's a significant number of gloves.
One order, but it's for multiple.
Right, yes. The, you know, part of, part of the having two sets of gear, you know, the ability to wash and clean the gear. Some of the, some of the things like the hoods and the gloves fell through the cracks on those and didn't re, people didn't realize that, you know, you have to wash the gloves and they're going to be out of service for two days. A hood is the same thing. So in order to have a second set that's available when you have to clean your first set, which has to be done at least twice a year, if, and more often when it's used, the chief's been buying some extra stuff to be able to make those issues. And, and the gloves are way more than, way more than one pair.
Yeah, and they, and the gloves do wear out.
Oh, yeah.
They, you know, they're probably the most worn out piece of fire.
If you can make it through a season without screwing off, you're doing well.
Yeah, you know, and, you know, the, I, it floors me to see some of the prices, but it doesn't floor me when I see the price of our ladder truck estimated at $2 million replacement right now. So, you know, things have gone crazy and the minute you put a siren on them, they get worse.
Personal protection, I think, is one of the important functions that we as a board can support you on. At the, on the same page, Jim, I would like to ask you the question about the Able Coil Study and the National Recreation and Park Association trailing right underneath it.
You have a page?
It's page nine.
Page nine at the very bottom.
So Able Coil is a reimbursable account or an application that came from Able Coil to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So although we write the check to Nathan L. Jacobson and Associates for the review by the town engineer, that is actually paid by the applicant.
Right, we did that with flexible application fees where they have to pay a portion or all of our engineering costs.
For their application.
For their application. We did that years ago.
The National Recreation and Park Association then follows to the next page for dues.
Yeah, that's annual dues and fees is for our, for Stephanie Crane, our recreation director.
On page seven, at the very top. Very top. It seems like a refund of $12,400 for some of what drive refund probably affects. That seems like a lot.
We've had a few people pay their taxes twice.
Okay, a good answer. Thank you.
And we're.
One thing I guarantee.
Never do. However, however, I can, at this point, I would, I will not take the discussion any further because we don't know what the personal, personal circumstances are. And I want to make sure we don't cast aspersions on anyone's effort. It's, it's, thank them for paying their taxes and if they pay twice, we're glad to give the money back. Anything else, Bob DePietro? Is there anything? I did notice that we have different referee payment per games. There's sometimes $52, sometimes $55 and sometimes $42, according to perhaps the expertise of the referee in the years of service at the gun. If there are no further questions at this time, I have a motion to approve.
Motion to move.
Go ahead, Bob, you can do it.
Bob DePietro?
I've moved to accept the AP report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike Aramita. All in favor, say aye.
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 As we move on to the budget transfers. I don't know budget transfers, so we'll move on. Thank you. We've heard from six A, I refer to six B up above, under five A.
Did we want to, under that, Pam, did we want to touch on the discussion we had about using our funds to tear down Natchorro Municipal Center?
Absolutely. Remember that we received ARPA funds, and I believe to the amount of close to $1.4 million. Approximately.
That's accurate.
And there had been discussion by the former board and there's been discussion touched on by this, by this seated board as to how to use that money. Jim, would you like to take over?
So one of the, you know, one of the questions we had and we felt that Mark Bowden would be an excellent person to have this discussion with was in the final rule document that was put out. And it, it gives us the rules and regulations essentially of how we can utilize those funds. There was some question about the use of the funds for demolition because it says that it has to be for public health reasons. So we had a really good conversation and we explained to the commissioner that, you know, we felt that this qualified because, you know, we have water intrusion. We have concerns about indoor air quality, mold issues. We don't have good air to air exchange. We know that based on an environmental survey, you know, that we have some PCB contamination in the masonry. We have some asbestos and that we felt that, you know, the viability of the building was unhealthy moving forward. And he said, you know, we talked to him about, you know, who makes, who makes the ruling about that justification? Because it was unclear in that final rule document. Well, he was able to clarify that for us, that we as a board are able to make that determination. That's your job as a board of selectmen to make the determination that you would use those funds for the demolition based on those very reasons. He also suggested that we tie it to the fact that, you know, we need to, you know, build a better town office facility that would meet modern standards with indoor air quality and air exchange and suggested that when we decide to use those funds for that purpose, if in fact that is what we decide to do, that we put that kind of language in the motion so that anybody looking at this in the future has that information at their fingertips.
Have a little puzzle.
I'm not, I'm just wondering, we have, we have a public health directory.
Yes.
Can we have them just write a letter that they reviewed the building? And I don't think it's, they recommend that it be taken out of service as a public.
It's a double edged sword.
I know, but we've been saying it for a long time. You gotta fight the board.
Well, we have been held up and we'd like to be able to move forward with the temporary office building. A draft letter.
And they were also, you know, we, Kathy and I have shared with this board that we have been struggling with vendors to provide, you know, temporary instructors that we've discussed. And they were able to provide us with some contacts. So we'll be reaching out to those resources here in the upcoming weeks. The meeting was just, really, it was a tremendous meeting. They took the time to come out here. We had a great conversation. They've promised to be there for us as a resource moving forward. And we're gonna, you know, we're gonna take advantage of that.
Their honor. Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on then. Thank you for that update. And moving on to six C, consider an act on approval. We'd had this, an opening discussion. We've looked at the budget transfers that had come before. Sometimes as little as $25, up to $200 with the, I'd like to have a quick board discussion to consider. And we don't have to act and prove on tonight, but if we, we could do it maybe next meeting because I know the hour's late. But a quick discussion to talk about certain budget transfer amount that we would empower our permanent town administrator to be able to do. Mike Aramita?
Yeah, towards the end of the year, we always give the town administrator and the first selectman the, the ability to move monies to balance the budget. I think it was a $5,000 amount at the end. I think, you know, an amount of $1,000 at other times of the year is not unreasonable to allow them to make those transfers without bringing them to the board. You know, we'll, we'll find out about them because we'll be notified about them, I would assume, under the administrator's report kind of thing. Or, or some other place in the budget, in the, the meeting. But I think $1,000 is a fair amount to start with, see how it works. And if it, if it's not enough, we can readdress it at a later date. But I think for going forward, you know, until the end of the year, when we up it to 5,000, I think $1,000 is the right amount to start with.
Thank you. Bob DePietro?
Yeah, that sounds very reasonable, but I'd like to hear from you and also town administrator. What do you think is a good amount to try? Do you really with likes?
Let's, I'd like to go around the rest of the board first and I'll come back to that. Absolutely. Adam?
Quick look at the charter.
Reviewing the charter for a moment online, so he'll be back to us. Bob Moore?
Yep, my initial thoughts were between 500 and 1,000. Because so many of them are moving one category to another. There's, we're not approving additional expenditures in any of these. It's simply because our budgets are so small and, and the different departments have small budgets. When you have, when you categorize them when you're beginning, you just, you cannot plan that far ahead for all of these moves. And, and they become simply administrative moves. And we should allow the administrator the ability to do the report back to the board. And I would be comfortable with either number.
I think it's an efficient move to answer your question, Bob DePietro. It's for efficiency and I think it allows Jim to be able to move projects forward that need a small amount of money to cover whatever the, the cost is and take some of the labor away from it. Adam, did you find something?
I don't find anything in the charter that, that specifically authorizes that, but.
Would you like me to temporarily pass on this and come back to it so you can continue to look?
I mean, if it's a, if it's a relatively small amount, I don't have a, and it's reported to the board at the next, next meeting. I don't have a huge problem with it.
You like, do you like the $1,000?
Their transfers, not, you know, transferring from one budget line item to another. I would prefer $500, but I'm. But it too.
Would you consider starting at 1,000 and then we could change it to a future date?
If that's the consensus of the commission, I don't, of the board, I don't have a problem.
Bob DePietro, are you comfortable with the $1,000 you said?
Yes.
Mike Aramita was, Bob and Moore? You're okay, you're okay with it? Could I have a motion then? Would I make a motion to Adam?
I move that the board authorize the town administrator to approve budget transfers from one line item to another, no more than $1,000 with the condition that they be reported to the board at the next meeting.
Second.
Good. Very good. Then I would, for the comments, hearing none, could I have a, I'd like to call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on to number seven, we've heard, we've done number A. At this time, we're going to move to B. At this time, I would address the board indulgence that we hear from our acting board clerk. I'm throwing her right up the crack here. She has graciously been filling in since we've lost our board clerk. And she had some very insightful comments about what we pay clerks. And Kathy, would you like to share those?
So currently, we pay clerk $65 up to an hour. And then anything from an hour and a minute to the next full hour is another $10. And we kind of just go up at those $10 increments. So if you do two hours for a meeting, you're literally getting $75. What you need to take into consideration is that taking Yvonne out of the picture because she is what we consider our exception to the rule. Most of our clerks cannot sit at a meeting and type the minutes while the meeting is going on. And that's all we're paying them for is the actual time of the meeting. We are not paying them to go home after and actually type these minutes. Unfortunately, it is very, very hard to find board clerks. We have gone through this for years. We're lucky with the clerks that we have. We have reached out to the clerks that we have to see if people will be willing to pick up where Yvonne is leaving off. Unfortunately, at this time, they're not. And it's very hard because she was quote unquote, one of our best clerks. And she didn't clerk just one meeting. She clerked three different commissions for us. So we're losing a huge person here. And what we're doing right now is we're going to be filling in myself. I'm going to be filling in for board of selectmen for budget meetings. Danielle is going to fill in for some of the land use meetings. One of our other people, Ashley, she's going to help out with inland wetlands meetings right now. Hopefully, we're going to put ads out this week or next and see if we can get anybody. But it's very hard and we are not competitive with our rates. The rates out there are anywhere from 75 to 125 to 150 dollars per meeting. Yes, Mike?
Yes, you know, I, I never even took into consideration the fact that people had to go home and do these. You know, it was typing them and preparing them for the next meeting was part of their job, so to speak. It never even occurred to me that they were doing this on their own time. And to ask anybody to do work on their own time, I'm opposed to when they're doing it for free, so to speak. It's, it's not part of their job and people should be compensated for the time they put in for the needs of the town. And I think we need to come up with it, you know, I, I see these amounts here, but they don't talk about anything about the off hours. And I, I think, you know, it's like punching a clock. If we have X amount of dollars for the meeting, they should be paid some sort of a, you know, salary or an hourly wage for when they're typing and preparing them. So I don't think it's appropriate for us to ask them to do it at their own, to do it for free. I think we should pay for what we get and we should come up with some sort of a, a way to build the town for the hours they work.
Adam?
Somebody who regularly pays first. You don't pay people who type by the hour. You pay them by the page.
Yeah, you know, however, however we do it, I just, I don't see, I don't see us doing it for free.
No, I, I don't think, I, I mean, I have a problem doing something like you're paying them $75 for being there plus extra if the meeting goes beyond an hour. And then if you want to say plus $10 per page or something of the minutes. But then you kind of, I mean, you know, you want shorter minutes.
And there, I mean, there's nothing to say that we might not pull somebody else that can do what Yvonne did. She's, happens to be a really good typist. She can sit here and type and do it through the meeting and get everything done. But for the majority of people that are doing that, they can't.
We think that this would be, we discussed it. We think this would be a move in the right direction. I guess if you were to ask my suggestion, I would suggest that we potentially adopt the schedule and, you know, we put the ads out there and see what kind of response we get.
So you're saying $75, your recommendation, you have $75 for up to an hour, 85 for?
An hour to two hours.
An hour to two hours.
That's what it says. It's two to three hours.
Wow. Well, yes.
Pam, before you go too far, I, I'm going to be opposed to that because anything that doesn't include compensation for when they're working from home, typing these things up, I'm going to be opposed to. And I think. Because anything that doesn't com- include compensation for when they're working from home, typing these things up, I'm going to be opposed to, and I think. We should have that as part of the advertisement for the position. You can't do it and say, we hope next month we'll put something in there that pays you when you're at home. Doing work on your own time, I think it should be part of the the compensation package and identified when it's advertised, and I think it needs to be there.
But it, but it does, because the length of the meeting determines how long the minutes are, so. And and if you're paying somebody seventy-five dollars for the first hour, then you're paying them seventy-five dollars an hour. And it only becomes twenty-five dollars an hour if it's three hour, if the meeting is three hours, and so then that acco- that accomplishes that goal, it's not. Um, okay, so say they spend another hour actually typing up the minutes, which is. As much as a two or three hour meeting should normally be done it right in the first place. Um, then you're probably still paying dollars an hour, which is reasonable. You know, I mean, like, Corey Porter gets like a hundred dollars appearance fee, and then they charge maybe two fifty a page or two seventy-five a page for the transcript, so. That, and that's a transcript, that's a verbatim transcript, this is not a verbatim transcript.
Well, we've tried the verbatim, let's not go back there, we're not doing that, since that's literally hours upon hours.
And pages on pages on pages, like forty-five pages of minutes.
Apparently, they have the availability of the recording if they need it to.
Correct.
As type, so. It's not, I mean, if you're, if you're starting them off with seventy-five dollars for the first hour. No matter how much, a meeting's never going to go past three hours, because every commission in this town does not go that far. Maybe the planning and zoning commission might once in a while. I I think that's a fair wage, including the time to produce the actual minutes.
So let's be.
It, it might be for the first.
Another part, Michael, and that is, in talking with F O I at the uh, C C M conference. Uh, the lawyers that go before them, they were talking about the value and the way minutes should be done. And it should be very clear that the minutes can be a lot shorter than what we have now, that it's important that immediately in two days you get, you file. Uh, what motions were made, and then you can fill in later, later, seventy of seven days to get the rest of the minutes in. That the minutes just need to state what was talked about, not verbatim, so they can be a lot shorter, so it's. We've seen both ways, um, we've seen some very long sets of minutes that have been. Very inclusive and then, uh, but it's not necessary according to the Freedom of Information Specialists that were giving the presentation at the conference.
Right, but you look at, you look at this salary schedule, seventy-five dollars for the, for the first hour. Seventy-five dollars, you look at your, what's proposed here, seventy-five dollars for the first hour, if it's a one hour meeting, the minutes are very short. So they will have plenty of time in that seventy-five dollars. Outside of the meeting to type it up, but you get to a three hour meeting, you're looking at ninety-five dollars, and they may have at a three hour meeting. Twenty pages of notes to to type up, so it, it, it's like the scale is declining in the wrong direction.
It it's also very hard. I think for people to understand that, so for me to sit here and take notes. I understand what's going on, I work in this office, I see all of this stuff, but when somebody's coming in from the outside. They don't know what's going on in town, they're just listening to a meeting like this, they give more detail because. They don't understand what's going on, they don't understand what really is happening and what's being talked about all the time, so they're trying to make sure those details are in there. And yes, we have to keep the recordings, um, but that's. You know, I mean, we also have to provide minutes, minutes are supposed to be quote unquote, the typed minutes are supposed to be quote unquote, the record, the official record. So, you know, what do we go by? Somebody's trying to give you as much a detail as they can because they don't understand, okay? Whereas I can sit here and go, okay, well, we talked about this, and I could just paraphrase it really quick and go, well, this is what was said, because I know in the back of my head. Okay, this is what everybody was thinking, and this is what we're really talking about, whereas somebody coming in from the outside doesn't know that, so it's harder for them. Um, so there is a huge range of, I I will say that right now, at the sixty-five dollar range, we are at the lower end of the scale. I can tell you, we know some towns are starting at seventy-five, we know some towns that are paying a hundred and fifty dollars a meeting right now for clerks.
So I'm looking.
I could see fifty, a hundred and a hundred and fifty, when you look at three hour meeting, because you're going to have a lot more typing for a three hour meeting.
Well, I'm cheaper than you. I'm taking twenty-five, ninety-five and one ten. As a starter, we, we may have to review this again, but I figure this is a start point, um, that would be my recommendation.
Bob Di Pietro?
You're muted, Bob.
I mute, sir.
You're still muted.
Oh, how about now?
There you go.
Okay. Where I was a claims adjuster. I got paid by the number of pages of my report. Right there.
Yep, I know what you're saying.
So.
Did what, Bob, do you want to? To, to, did you hear Bob's proposal?
We kind of discussed it at the table a minute ago, and part of the problem is with minutes, we don't really want to encourage. Longer minutes, and so paying by the page is probably not appropriate for.
Very small number, like if it's two bucks a page or something like that, because that does not encourage them to make it longer, it's just a little.
Exactly, the, the, as, going back to where Pam was, is that minutes do not have to be. Narrative, it really is. It it very precise, very specific things that have to be there, the recorder person is doing, has to listen, has to. Decide that and when they put it together, yeah, so. It's not in, in, in a, let's say, a two and a half to three hour meeting. The the minutes may just be a little bit longer than would be for a two hour, but you still have to sit there and listen to.
Well, let me just say this.
With seventy-five, ninety-five and one ten. It's basically, I I thought they had.
And the way, and the way right now that we pay board clerks is by the actual time that we start the meeting.
Right.
And the time we finish the meeting, so if they're at an hour and one minute, they automatically go to that second pay level. If they don't, if we're at fifty-nine minutes, they get paid for one hour, that's it, so it is strictly. By the actual minutes of when the meeting is started and when they end it.
They have hard clips, yep.
Those are rare that you're going to have.
I have no, I have no motion, but Bob Di Pietro, you had another comment, sir?
Yes, if you're impatient, if you are impatient, and you ran a very quick meeting.
Hurry up, Bob.
It would change everything.
That's why I put in a, a nine o'clock curfew for the planning and zoning commission. Never went beyond that o'clock.
I would have liked to do that, but we had guests to see.
Pam, I'd like to make a motion.
Michael, Michael Aramita?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion that the board clerk salary be fifty dollars for an hour, a hundred dollars for the two to three, and. A hundred and fifty for the third category.
A hundred and thirty or a hundred and fifty, I'm sorry.
Hundred and fifty, fifty, a hundred and a hundred and fifty, the three different levels. In place of the seventy-five, eighty-five and ninety-five.
So you're, you're, you're going down from sixty-five to fifty.
I'm going from seventy-five to fifty for the first hour, then the second hour goes to a hundred, and the third hour goes to a hundred and fifty.
Presently, we pay sixty-five.
It, right, now, my recommendation is fifty, a hundred and a hundred and fifty, the three different levels. Yes, one goes down, two go up. And that's my motion.
Further discussion you want to have on your motion, Michael?
Nope, I'm good.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Okay, yeah.
Bob Di Pietro seconds?
Bear in mind, we never get anybody to take these jobs.
I will, I. My, I will be voting against that, Mike, uh, just because I believe the first number is too low.
Uh, well, I think. I think coming out for an hour is fifty bucks is not bad, and especially because you only have maybe a page a minute, no, uh, minutes, maybe a page and a half, so it's. Fifty is not bad for an hour's work and cleaning up at home, and I think the next two actually compensate the people for the work they do at home.
Right, my, in my view, Mike, um, we're asking them to hold these meeting dates on their calendar. Uh, it locks them into a schedule, it's not just, well, if they come out, they don't come out, you know, that kind of thing. Um, we have had great representation in this position before, and that's why I would be in opposition, because I think it. In respect for them actually holding their calendar open for us as a non-member of the board and as an employee, I think it should be higher. But that's my, my personal opinion, uh. Bob Moore?
Yeah, I. I I would not go under seventy-five for the starter.
Seventy-five and eighty-five.
Is, is that? Whoever's looking at that position is going to look. Or a number. And 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 Mike, I didn't, could you repeat what you had, I I did, I.
I, I had, I had recommended fifty. Uh, a hundred and a hundred and fifty, but that takes the first one down, if. If you'd like, I could amend my motion to seventy-five, a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five, if that makes everybody feel better.
I have a motion on the floor, Michael, to move the question, Mr. Teller has voted to move the question, it is not debatable.
Okay.
At this time, uh, all in favor say aye.
What, which is moving the original question?
We're moving the motion that Mike Aramita has just made.
Yeah.
And it was seconded by Bob Di Pietro.
Seconded by Bob Di Pietro, and the question has, uh, is on the table before us, and it's not debatable. Uh, all in favor say aye.
You've got.
Aye.
Aye.
We have two yeses, is that correct? We have two yeses at this time, that that motion fails, we're going to, I will entertain a, a second motion, Bob Di Pietro, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, seventy-five, hundred, hundred and fifty, that's a hundred and, yeah, seventy-five, hundred, and what was the third, hundred and quarter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seventy-five, one hundred and one hundred and twenty-five?
Yes, and I'll second that.
One, two, five, okay. And we have a second by Mr. Aramita.
Yep.
We have, can we have an effective date as part of this motion?
And could you, Mike, uh, Bob, could you make, could you amend your motion to have an effective date?
Yes.
What would you like?
Um.
Doesn't matter.
How about like?
Tomorrow?
Oh, it's February first.
February first, so we, clear this month, you add that to your, uh, motion, uh, beginning February first?
Want to ask, why February first?
We need to, in January.
We need to advertise it, and we have.
Then I, if you want to advertise it right away, why don't you make it retroactive to January first?
Yes.
And and then you can do the whole thing this month.
May.
It's Bob Di Pietro's motion?
Yeah.
Yes, I agree with that.
What is, Bob, so you agree that it is retroactive to January first?
Correct. As long as Kathy does that for a reason.
I'll need a second to that.
I, I.
Hang on, I apologize, Adam, uh, it needs to. Yes, sir.
Clarifying question. Bob, is the intent that it be seventy-five dollars for up to the first hour, a hundred dollars for up to two hours? And one twenty-five for up to three hours?
Yes, yes.
And what about beyond that, is it, is it twenty-five dollars for each additional hour, not that I think it's going to happen, hopefully, but it will. So we might as well take care of it. Is the intent that it be twenty-five dollars for each additional hour of the, of the meeting?
If it, if it works for you, yes, otherwise.
I'm just asking.
Works for me.
Okay.
Uh, but, all right, Bob Di Pietro, I'm going to repeat back so I understand what you've proposed.
Good luck.
That it'll be seventy-five dollars the first. I love this part, I'm just saying.
Making Kathy's funny is.
This doesn't affect me.
Uh, seventy, is she seven, seventy-five, one, for the first hour, one hundred from first hour and one minute to the second, to the second hour. Uh, beginning the second hour plus one minute is a hundred and twenty-five to the third hour, and twenty-five dollars additional for each. Hour after, after three. Is that clear, Bob?
A nice cream cone.
And. And retroactive to January first.
Effective January first, twenty twenty-three, retroactive.
Yes, correct.
Well, no, yeah.
No, so this is. Bye, Bob, do we have a second, Mike Aramita?
I second it.
No.
With all the amendments, I second those as well.
I'm sorry, Mike.
I said, I second it, and with all the amendments and changes, I second those as well.
Uh, further discussion, Adam?
Live with it, how would I would have posted, so.
Bob, can, all right, that time, that, for that, uh, it sounds like we have a consensus, so I'll move right to the vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, we have five.
Go, people.
Hey, you guys are great, thank you so much.
Let's stretch this meeting out another hour.
In another five minutes, I'm going to go change into my jammies, so you're going to have to.
Move on to seven, see, uh, Intervil House, uh, has asked for a donation. Uh, Jim, would you like to address that, you had the letter in, at the end of your packet, Jim?
So they, they, they're requesting that we include a thousand dollars in our upcoming budget as a donation to the Intervil House. They tell us that, I believe, they've served eight town residents, uh, last year. They never require that we pay them any money, they just, uh, it's, it's a suggested amount.
Sam, do you have a recommendation?
We, we can, yeah, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't have a strong recommendation either way, I have no sense of what services they provided. For a town residence or, or what the value of those services may have been.
Okay, I make a recommendation? What, we can, would you contact our social service director and have her? Just a quick call to them, do a little, uh, half hour search project, get back to you, and we will bring this up on our February.
Sure.
And we'll move on, if there's consensus around the board. We've done D, we've done E, we are under grant awards, uh, at the first part, we consider an act on a, on, on the library grant, uh, in the packet, but.
We got it in, this is everybody's packet, but.
I didn't see it.
These that we can pass around, in, in any case, the, the library. Uh, along with the, I believe it's the Friends of Bentley Memorial Library, applied for a grant from the Hartford Foundation for Giving. It's a bit, bit messy because they. Decided that the Friends of Bentley Memorial Library would be the fiscal sponsor, but they put the town's E I N number in as part of the application. Nonetheless, any grant applications are required to come before the Board of Selectmen for consideration and approval. And in particular, when a grant, um, includes a physical change to a town property. Yeah, this particular grant that has been actually awarded to the library by the Hartford Foundation for Giving. Uh, is for a thirty by thirty patio on the outside of the building. If you can imagine yourself walking up the sidewalk to the library, it would be on the right hand side of the sidewalk. Between the curb and the plantings that are proposed, that are currently in place, and they would connect the. Patio with the existing sidewalk from the far corner, essentially creating the triangle. So after the fact, we're asking the. Consider. So, after the fact, we're asking the board to consider approving the grant application.
When is, when is the deadline, Jim?
I believe, I believe the Friends of Bentley Memorial Library have already received the funds.
Here's a picture, which I don't even know if you can see very well. So if you see the white walkway here, that's coming out of the library to it.
And then
And we can send this to you by email as well.
Yeah, we just literally got this. And then this is more of a picture coming up from the parking lot.
So, I don't, and I don't think for the purposes of the, of this discussion, the location is necessarily important. I think, you know, it's whether or not the board would consider approving the concept of an outdoor space at the library, which they would like to use for programming. And in their, um, presentation that they sent, the Hartford Foundation for Giving, you know, they, they make a pretty good argument that it would be a space, you know, that would be more inclusive because it would be accessible uh, to, to individuals with disabilities, and that would provide them a large outdoor space which they could hold programs. And so, we, we'd like to ask that the board, um, consider an act on whether or not uh, they would approve this, at least in concepts, so that we could come back to you with some details. And, and truly plan out how this, uh, grant money could be spent to create an outdoor patio space for their programs.
I would appreciate having a little more information, their thought process, why the patio was not put on another side of the building, perhaps in the back where it's quieter, um, for presentations and stuff. There's actually quite a bit of traffic noise, having done events and performed weddings in the gazebo. Uh, there's, it's, it's actually quite, can be quite noisy going through that area. Um, I'd just like a little more of their thought process. I appreciate their efforts and the reason for it. But I was just interested in why, interested why it was put right there in the, in the very front.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have that information.
Do they need to have this voted at this meeting, or can we use this as an informational item and get, and vote on it in the February meeting?
We, we need to decide to accept the grant to send the money back. You know, it's, it's, it's a difficult thing. We had, we had no notice. We found out about this because I'd got a letter.
It's unusual.
While we were creating this agenda, we got the letter. I had, you know, very, very little information to go on. Uh, I've had conversations with our staff that's, you know, and we're, we're trying to untangle, because there's a fiscal part of this too, right? Uh, you know, because they've, you know, created the Friends of Bentley Memorial Library as the fiscal sponsor, but they use the town's EIN number, so there's a fiscal piece of this that we have to untangle, but also.
And is, whether, is it matching?
It is not. It is a, it, there, there is, if you look at this, um, proposal, and I don't think it's in this. I think we have a separate spreadsheet. I think their total costs for the patio and some plantings and enhancements is around fourteen thousand dollars. They did receive a donation of five hundred dollars from someone for plantings, so they've, they've got around three thousand dollars in expenses that they haven't, that says to be determined on where that, that funding is gonna come from. So, again, I, I'm not sure that the location of the patio is important, uh, for tonight's discussion. I think that has to come back before the board with a much better proposal than we have here for that consideration. I think, you know, really, it's, I, I, I think you could act based on whether or not you approve of the idea.
Does it have to go to planning and zoning?
It, it may.
Adam, could you just say it a little louder?
It has to go to planning and zoning to approve it as a public improvement.
Under eight twenty-four.
And it should come under. And it should have come before Properties and Facilities Subcommittee as well of this board.
We can do it as a committee as a whole, but.
Yes, we can. Well, meaning, well intentioned.
Um, I mean, I, I, I don't think it's a terrible idea either. It just, I'm not sure that, how, how people will, will like to look at it. In front of the lawn.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's an appropriate.
It's not a good place for it, but.
Doesn't show a balance architecturally.
I concur.
Move it and be happy. I, I just wonder, is there any piping or anything underneath there that, that, especially when?
We have to worry about where the septic system is, and I, I don't know where that is. On the right side?
The north side, yeah.
Which, which seems to me would be the perfect place for the patio.
And what about the new septic system?
That's, there, there's. That's the other thing, when, when you get, get the, uh, that bill, that, that system will be and, and that's why I was gonna ask the question. You can accept it on, on a conceptual basis, but when do you have to expend, you know?
I, I don't think there's a rule on expense date.
And that's what, then, that, that would, because of what we're planning to have a tie into a community septic system, we would be eliminating that leach field, and would, would provide a greater uh, ability to plan this in, in a manner that is probably better fitted than just sticking it in the front.
You could just put it on the other side.
Well, e- either way, I mean, but I'm just saying, other than.
Actually, I think it would be more appropriate on the other side. Because there's a house to the right.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
And there's another use to the right.
And, and there's a, is a nice big open area on the north side, which would really make it a, a, a better, anyhow.
I'm willing to accept the grant.
Right.
With the condition about that the, the board ultimately is gonna tell them where to put it.
Where it's gonna be.
Just a little tired. I'm gonna call a meeting back to.
Thank you for the smiles. Uh, Adam, would you like to make a motion? Would you like to make a motion?
The board accept the, uh, grant award, ten thousand dollars from Hartford Foundation for Public Giving for the use of creating an accessible patio area at the, at the Bolton, uh, Bentley Memorial Library with the condition where Selectmen approve the ultimate site of, site and configuration.
Mike Aramita. Got the seconded in. Uh, further discussion, uh, Bob DiPietro?
It would be nice if somebody reached out to the, uh, friends of the library and, uh, communicate finding what they're thinking, what the options are.
Well, we, we have. We, we are in communication.
What's the deadline for us to communicate back to the foundation? Whether, whether or not we accept their money or not? Because I really think the town people would like us to accept the money and work out the details later.
I think, yeah, I think that's what we're working on.
The motion, that's great. Uh, Bob Moore?
I'm happy with the motion.
Happy with the motion, then, if I hear no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Uh, moving on to the Bolton Heritage Farm Grant. Jim, you're up.
And this is one that you did approve us applying for, uh, and this was for bringing potable water back to the farm, and we were, uh, given the grant from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving for that project.
Any further discussion?
Mike.
We, we, I think, I don't believe we need a motion for that because we've already approved it, Mike.
I was just making the motion to accept it, that's all.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's necessary. We, we, the board reacted on it, and we, and we have the funds already.
Good, excellent.
Moving on then, thanks, Mike. Moving on to consider an act on the two grants that we, we talked, uh, we have already done one. We're going to go to the TRIP grant.
So we've had some conversation about, uh, the Lyman Road Bridge, and staff at this point is going to recommend that we apply, uh, under the TRIP grant for the Lyman Road Bridge, which we expect under today's pricing to be somewhere around eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The match on this is twenty percent. In conversations with the CAPA Committee and with the town engineer, um, we believe that we could put the match into the capital budget over a period of two years. But, and by the time this project goes out to bid and actually gets constructed, we would be in a position, um, to be able to meet our match. The, the work is largely already, the design is largely already complete. This is a project that we have the funding to do the design for, so that it was on the shelf, so that we would be able to put a grant together very quickly. And the reason that this is a really good opportunity is that most grants that we would apply for, for this bridge slash culvert replacement would be a fifty percent match under, under the federal culvert and bridge program. It would be a, a fifty percent match. So this is a great opportunity to be able to get that done. And as far as the physical infrastructure is concerned, this is the one the town engineer is most concerned about. Um, it, it has the, I, I guess, greatest amount of decay of any of the bridges that we would have to consider doing. So we would need the board's, uh, approval to go ahead and apply for this grant.
Bob Moore?
I would, I would move that we do that, and I can, have to concur with Jim, that, of, of the importance of getting this culvert bridge corrected. It's been deteriorating over at least a couple of decades. And, and it, it is well beyond the point of needing replacement. It is now in dire need of replacement.
Do I have any other comments?
Was that a motion?
Not yet.
Yeah, I did, a motion that we approved.
A motion is before us, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Adam seconds it, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We have a unanimous vote on that, thank you very much.
On that grant application. But, I believe it's the end of February that one's due.
End of February, thank you, sir. Thank you for your work on that. Uh, we're, working on number eight now. We're getting down, we're getting down there, guys. Good job. Uh, COVID nineteen, you've probably heard that there's been an elevated COVID surge, and the counties that are most affected are down on uh, um, the shoreline, uh, mostly to the, um, Fairfield end. They have the highest rates, and we are at, we're considered, in Bolton, we're considered moderate. So at this time, I'm not recommending any action by the board. Uh, moving on then to, no, no further questions, moving on to number nine, administrative, I'm trying to go fast, Bob. Uh, Administrative Officers Report, A, the monthly report, which you have, uh, sent out in, if you get it in the packet, right?
It's in the paper packages, and it got emailed.
It got emailed to you this morning, and there is a, a great number of work that has been done, plus all the holiday work, uh, holiday time, plus a storm that decided to come ripping through and caused quite a bit of havoc, um, in our town, and having received many phone calls. People think that some of people in town have a magic wand and can make everything happen immediately. Um, it's not true. We spent many hours driving people what the process is, and once people understood, it was really, it was there's, there are no problems. They were just frustrated and, uh, under great pressure because of the season of the year, as well as the cold, the extreme cold that set in. Are there any questions for Jim on his report?
I did include for you in this report a synopsis of our storm activities. You know, s- some of you have seen what we do, some of you have not, but I can tell you that the team that we have in place works like a very well-oiled machine. The, the, the synergy that takes place between all of the town departments to make sure that the town is ready for uh, an event of this type, or even larger, uh, is able to respond to and then recover from is, is absolutely tremendous. We, we have an extraordinary team of individuals who are dedicated, uh, to all of those tasks. Some are paid, some are volunteers, like our fire department members. But it's an extraordinary effort, and I just wanna, you know, for anybody who's out there listening, I just want to say thank you for all the work that everybody does. Resilient and be able to recover from these.
Thank you. Uh, moving on then, if there are no further questions, I don't see any, Mike, oh, sorry, Mike Sanders.
It, yeah, uh, I'd like to go back to what I asked you for a couple of minutes about when Barry spoke at the beginning of the meeting. If I could do that now, or when you'd like me to.
Is there any question on, uh, uh, Mike, on, on Jim Rubritz's report, though?
No.
Yes, Mike, please address it.
Uh, yes, and I, I've been bringing this up at the fire department, and I think it needs to be brought up at the town level as well. And that's the danger of the notch road exiting onto the end of three eighty-four and vehicles belonging to the town attempting to cross over to forty-four across that intersection. Uh, I urge the fire department with the, well, for one thing, the cost of the vehicles, plus if you pull out of there with a ladder truck or a tanker, and a car comes around the corner, that slow-moving vehicle can't get out of your way. Uh, can't get out of the car's way. It's gonna be a horrendous nightmare. And we pull across there with our mowers and our dump trucks and our plow trucks, and I think the town should enact a ban on any municipal vehicle belonging to us in any way, shape, or form from exiting notch road onto Route six or forty-four. Uh, the fire department has a, a general standing rule, and it's going into our new standard operating guidelines that we won't go down that road to access the other side of town. Uh, I, I, it's, it's a situation that is deadly, and it's only a matter of time before it happens. And I think we should get ahead of it before it does happen, and that's ban all town vehicles of any type from exiting notch road onto Route six or onto forty-four. The, the only, I'm, I'm just talking about it. I know we're not gonna make a, a motion and do it tonight, but it's something that we need to begin to talk about and put in place, because it, it's only a matter of time before somebody pulls out there with the, with the tractor, with the mower on it, or a snowplow, or a ladder truck, or a tanker, or any other thing that we own, and gets creamed by a car. Our vehicles are so big that it's gonna be deadly. I'm just bringing it up, and I'd like it to go on a future meeting.
I was just gonna say, would, would you consider that we put it on the February meeting?
Absolutely.
That will give the administration time to go back to their different departments and speak to them and get their uh, views on that particular.
I can't argue against it, because I, I won't use it.
Right, and.
And, and ask questions of their other departments?
Just, just so you have a little insight, we figure forty seconds longer to go the other way. Williams Road and down past Georgina's that way. It takes us forty seconds longer with a fire truck. Forty seconds is not too much for safety.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, and we can talk in February. Uh, Bob Moore and I have been speaking with the DOT. Um, we'll, we'll bring that up in the February meeting, if you'll add that to the, that intersection, and we'll give an update then. Um, and the Administrative Officers Report under other, I'm just gonna add one thing I've been asking you about, the diversity training, is that all set? The end of the month?
Not sure if we finalized it.
No, we're, we have not finalized yet, so. No, we're, we have not finalized yet, so. Okay, we'll come back to the.
That was going to be the thirtieth and thirty-first, right?
I thought it was the thirty-first to the seventh.
So we had, we had two separate dates, and they've come back and asked us to do everything in one day, which is just.
No, two days. We talked about late one day and then the morning the next day.
But then they came back and asked us if we would do it all in one day because they didn't want to travel back and forth. So we're, we're still negotiating.
So we're not gonna do it at the end of the month yet, apparently, we're getting close.
I want to give at least, at least thirty days' notice so that we can really spread the word out there.
Is this for just town employees? Is this for boards and commissioners?
So it it's it's gonna, you know, so our thought process is that it will be mandatory for any town employee that has not yet done it. Um and then we will open additional slots up to board and commission members. And we are, we are hoping, uh we've gotten to the point where we've negotiated uh thirty slots for each meeting. And we are hoping to fill every single slot.
And you are hoping to hold it here at Town Hall?
Uh probably over at uh notch road because the space is bigger.
It'll be freshly painted.
Right.
Uh and we'll have a an adult-sized toilet. Just one little smile there. Uh Ben, uh having heard all that, thank you. We will move on then to the next AP meeting. Uh is scheduled for Tuesday, the seventeenth, but we do not have a time. Adam, could you look at your calendar and see if you have anything popping on the seventeenth or that we could help work around? Because we value your presence.
Right now, I have, I'm open. So.
Would you like a nine thirty?
Nine thirty is.
Bob Di Pietro's nine thirty good for you?
Weekend.
On the seventeenth?
I'm still sleeping.
Oh. Well, you could, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll prop you up with one eye open. It'll be fine.
Okay, okay, okay.
Mike Aramita's, I could feel on the seventeen?
Nine thirty, you said?
Nine thirty, sir.
Okay.
Bob, you're in?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. That looks like we've concluded everything. I apologize for the very late hour. Uh it is, uh I would ask for a motion to adjourn at nine fifteen.
I need. I need eight more minutes to go to the next hour.
We're, we're adjourning at ten oh one.
I need ten oh six. We didn't start till ten oh six, Mike.
All right, well, then, ten oh six. It's in the minutes.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a great night, you guys.
Bye.